Okay, welcome. I'm Ken Stoggins, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I am calling this meeting to order of the Shasberry Select Board on Monday, February 15th, 2016, at 6:30. First item of business, does anyone on the agenda, does anyone on the board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda?
No.
No.
No. Very good. Approval of minutes. We have minutes from February 1st that were circulated. I had made some corrections to those, as everyone had a chance to see those.
Did I got the one, the corrected ones?
Yes.
There was a paper in somewhere, let me see, I can't remember where I saw it. Minor.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 1st?
So moved.
Moved by Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Is there any, any more additions or corrections to the minutes?
Hmm, I can't find it right now. No.
All in favor of approving the minutes from February 1st as circulated with my additions? Say aye.
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 The minutes from February 1st are approved, 4-0-0. Do you have a clean copy of those somewhere? You want to sign that, and I'll just... Warrants. The first warrant here is a retirement warrant, number 35, in the amount of $121.13.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor of approving check retirement warrant, number 35, in the amount of $121.13. Say aye.
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 Motion is approved, 4-0-0. I have payroll warrant, number 17, in the amount of $22,430.35.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, favor of approval, say aye.
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 The payroll warrant, number 17, in the amount of $22,430.35, is approved, 4-0-0. I have check warrant, number 34, in the amount of $4,118. This is to Ink Spot Press for the town report.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Check warrant, number 34, for $4,118, is approved, 4-0-0.
That's what it looks like.
And finally, I have check warrant, number 24, in the amount of $17,781.56.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Major items on this are $5,500 to Applied Rescue Systems of New England.
That's the combination rescue tool for the fire department approved at a fire meeting.
Yeah.
It's an education.
Josh's license.
Kind of, yeah, it's an education.
$1,300 to Bennington County Regional Commission for our part of the solid waste implementation plan, it looks like.
BCSWA.
$1,300 to Evans News.
That's the fire department, they bought 52 steel chairs.
52 steel chairs?
Yeah, I guess like folding chairs for meetings and stuff.
From Evans News?
Well, Evans is like everybody else, they have a big catalog section.
Oh, okay. $1,100 tax refund to Doris LeBlanc. $12,000 to Mountaineer Assessors, for Jim Boyle. $1,300 to Eddie Scholl Construction for the work downstairs, painting and such. And those are the major items. Any more discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Check warrant, number 24, in the amount of $17,781.56, is approved, 4-0-0.
We'll get them to you.
I think you can leave them down there, because Melanie's taking them all with her tonight.
Oh, okay.
Are there any announcements?
I have an announcement. I, as like, as last year, I will not be here for the town meeting. I have a standing commitment on the first, ninth week of the year. And for this year, I thought I was going to be here, but because February 29th, the town meeting falls, and anytime, I will not be around. So I just, I approve the budget. I think we did a good job on the budget. I think we should vote yes on the location of the town garage on North Road. I believe the pickup, the ballot item for the property at North Road, we should approve. I think the community, North Shasberry Community, or Shasberry Community Club should be tax exempt. And I think most, all the appropriations should be approved. But I think we did a good job, and I, again, it's just timing. I'm just not here week number nine of any year, so that's why I'm not going to be here.
All right. Thank you, Mitch. Any other announcements?
Nope.
Public comments. Ed Corey, I bet you have something to say.
Yeah, I just got a few questions.
Can we ask you to come to the microphone? We had some people complain last time that they couldn't hear you.
Well, I watched others, and they don't come off wrong.
I'm sorry?
I watched some others, that other guy there, he stood back and mumbled all the time.
All right, well, it's, it's your minute, so if you want not to be heard, go right ahead.
Just a few questions. I'd like, just simple, yes or no answer. And I'll ask you each to respond one at a time, yes or no.
Let me point out that this is a time for public comments, it's not a time for debate. We will, we will not be engaging in debate at this time. If you want to make a comment, you're welcome to do that.
So you won't answer any questions?
No.
What, you just let Mitch speak, and he was telling how to vote on ballot?
That was my public announcement.
If you want to make a comment, you're make, you're welcome to make a comment, but we're not inclined to engage in public debate during public comments time.
I'm asking for a yes, and I'll answer my question.
Make your comments, please.
Do you want me to ask a question?
I'm saying this is a time for public comments, it's not a time for debate. If you don't wish to make a comment, we're going to move on.
My first question, will I have a written answer response, one by one, to the two pages of questions I asked before town meeting? And I'd just like to ask, yes or no?
It's not my decision, Ed.
Yeah, he's not in, here to engage in debate either.
Did I ask Mitch yes or no?
I can tell you, I will, I'll answer that question. For the, it's the same question, really the same question, as I was, point I was making before. No, we do not, we are not inclined nor obliged to engage in a written debate, and we, we are not, not going to do so.
Okay, so anytime anybody's got a question here at meeting, you're not inclined to answer any questions?
I wouldn't say that. I answered your first question. Go ahead, we'll see if we feel like answering your second questions. But I'm pointing out that you're trying to engage us in debate, that is not what this time is for.
I'm not engaging in any kind of debate. I'm asking a simple question, if somebody else was here and asked you to respond yes or no, you'd respond yes or no?
What's your next question?
If the ballot article is voted no, will you follow the wishes of the town speaker?
Yes.
And could I ask Mitch?
I will answer for the board. They can, if, if they wish to, to, to disagree with me, they can. We're not going to sit here and go one by one through all the people. If you want an answer, I will answer for you. And if that doesn't satisfy, then you'll be allowed to make a comment, and otherwise, we're going to move on.
Let me just say that if the vote for the town location is not approved by the town, it's going to cost the taxpayers more money, because we don't own other land that could be used for an industrial use like the town garage.
And the question I asked, if the ballot article is voted no, will you follow the wishes of the town speaker? And Tim just said, yes? Was that your response?
It was.
So, can I hand these candles out at town meeting?
Um, that's a legal question.
Yeah, I think we'd have to get an opinion on that. I'm not sure what the law is, Ed. If you can legally hand them out, we, I don't think, if you can legally do it, we'll look into it.
No, you know, I've seen others...
I know that campaigning is not allowed at town meeting, legally, so, and I think, what...
Yeah, I know before, when they voted on, you know, Brian's site, the first couple times of the bond, they handed out stuff. And there might be a restriction, I understand, you know, whether you can do it inside or outside the building and all that. Maybe you should check.
We'll make an inquiry to the state.
We'll make an inquiry, yes.
To the state attorney general. Could I ask, Ed? Sorry, I don't want to break the sound. Could you leave me one copy of whatever it is you want to hand out, in case they want to know what it is?
It's the same thing that's in the...
We have lots of copies of that.
Oh, it's the same thing, okay, all right.
And then, would you build a $400,000 house on the site where you're proposing a town garage?
I decline to answer that.
And then, would you drink the water from the gray spring house on the former Crawford, Crawford, Crawford? That's where you first come in with the...
I'm not going to answer that one either.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Any other public comments? All right, I think behind that great big chair, there must be a little bitty treasurer. Melanie Dexter, can you come forward, please?
Yes, she is. Witness chair.
Where's our? Where's my chair?
I did not have time to tell everybody, but everybody has a copy. Everybody has a copy.
We have, we have paper, yeah.
I mean, it's not even all that, it's not every full month, it's not terribly informed yet, but you can see the, I won't read it to you. It's just a halfway point in the month, and no surprises, everything is going along fine. I talked about the reserve funds with, with Dave, and as we mentioned before, there's, they're reorganizing them. And I thought that maybe next time, or maybe the time after, depending on the audit, I will bring in a list of all of those reserve funds and what their balances are. Right now, it's a little hard to get your arms around it, because things are moving. But Dave thought, and I agree, that it would be good for all of us to have a good handle on all of those and what's in them, so I'll do it.
We're talking about the legacy reserve funds?
Yeah, and the...
The whole, the whole contingent.
Yeah.
Eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, all of our reserve funds.
Eight, eight and a half dozen, yeah, that's a lot of money there.
Yeah, and it, water is in there, which I think, I don't necessarily, I think it's better to be able to look at water separately. And anyway, so either next time or the time after, I will break those out, so that we all have a better handle on what's in there. As you can see, delinquent taxes continue to be coming in ahead of last year, so...
Yeah, it's good.
Everything's going along fine. I'm going to be gone the next few days, so I was going to write some checks, but if you have any questions for me?
Okay, I don't believe I do.
I have no question.
Thank you, Bill.
The checks you want to write, does that include our stipend for the year?
Was it in the warrant you just said?
No.
No.
Then I guess not.
Actually, yeah, that's a question to...
We don't get it till March.
Yeah. Yeah. When did you normally give it out? Just Ken had asked, and I didn't...
March, right?
I don't know, I always...
It was always a surprise.
Either just before or just after first week, I thought.
You know, thinking of it, it probably should have been just before, but we'll do it for the next warrant. We'll do it, yeah.
I can go check easily enough, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a surprise when I got it.
More surprise you can.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
All right, we gave the road foreman the day off for the holiday. So Dave, I guess you're going to tell us what's going on out there.
Not a lot to report on the road department right now. Been out, we've had some snow, or very little. They might be out later, depending on whether the weather gets to us or not, because there's some talk of ice and snow overnight, but it's so fluid right now, I'm not sure what it's going to do. There's not a lot to report on the road department right now that I could get into. I believe just there's nothing urgent or imminent coming up.
What, they say two to four inches tonight, turning to rain by, what, 3 o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, it's the ice pack or somewhere in there, it, you know...
You don't really believe a weatherman, do you?
Yeah. So it'll be, it'll be in its teens overnight.
They said it was going to be cold Sunday, and it...
Yeah, it was, it was.
50 degrees.
They were right once.
I got that right. High of zero, I had. A friend of mine back in Texas pointed out that they always get the wind right. Rain, snow.
Yeah.
Sunny, cloudy, not so sure, but they always can tell you the wind speed the next day. All right. Item 9 is an update on DRB and PC positions.
Okay, I now have letters of interest from everyone on both boards who was up, except for Megan Donkers, who I think there might be...
I think she's, I think she's leaving.
Yeah.
I mean, she's not re-upping.
Okay, yeah, I sent her an email earlier today, just to try and clarify if she's not coming back or not. I haven't heard from her, but everyone else has. And we still now have the opening on the DRB, and now apparently two openings on the DRB, if Megan's not coming back, so we'll have to start looking again, two people for the DRB.
All right, well, let's read the names of the, the people who have raised their hands again, and invite the public to submit before our next meeting, letters of support or objection to the candidates who have raised their hands.
Okay, we have Michael Day for the DRB. Jay Palmer as the alternate for the DRB. We have Bree De La Roca for the planning commission. Michael Bailey for the planning commission. Foley, I'm Foley, Foley, sorry. Michael Biddy for the DRB. And David Mance for the DRB.
The DRB or planning?
I'm sorry, he switched to planning, he was on the DRB, so I'm... And that would leave then not just Megan's position, I hadn't heard that, so if that's true in Carl's, I guess. So we need two, two people.
One alternate, one full, is that how that works?
No, they're both...
Both, both.
Two full-time positions, so... We'll have to get that back up, I'll alter the website tomorrow if, I hadn't heard about Megan, so I'll alter the website if there's two DRB positions open.
Oh, wait till you hear from her.
Well, I will wait. I think we should probably get back real quickly, so...
As Jay Palmer indicated, will they not he'll accept a full position on the DRB?
He, he...
Specifically said alternate.
Yeah, Jay's like the alternate, we could ask if he wants one.
Yeah, let's ask him, and let's assume that he's going to accept a full position, and then we'll have one full position and an alternate open.
Alternate, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Item 10, I thought we would make comments again on the ballot and town meeting warning, much as we did the last time, just, it bears repetition for people who don't watch us at home every single time. The... The first item that comes up is shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,809,647 to the fray, the town's general and highway expenses for the fiscal year 2017? Bears pointing out again that we have changed our voting procedure a little bit to avoid double voting, something that we have been doing for a couple of years and could potentially leave problems. So we, when we, that number, that $1.8 million number, does not include the community appropriations that will be on the ballot the next day. Those community appropriations this year totaling some $72,000. You should know that when we have done our budgeting, and we have aimed to keep the tax rate flat, we have assumed that all the community appropriations will be approved. Although it does bear observing that those, that totaling community appropriation accounts for almost two cents on the tax rate now. And they are up from $60,000 last year. On the ballot, we are asking the voters to approve the purchase of real estate on North Road that second residence there by the entrance to the landfill became available for sale. We are hoping to consolidate our position there in that industrial zone. We bought the one quarter acre lot last year. The second one was not available, it is available now. We are hoping to purchase that and then eliminate a residence that's sitting in, in that industrial zone. As we've said, that is a potential spot, we thought, for a town garage location. But whether or not we put the town garage there, it's a smart thing to do, to buy that and get those residences that were grandfathered in out of there and consolidate our holdings there. Item 7 on the ballot, shall the town vote to exempt the Shasberry Community House Inc. from payment of town and school taxes for a period of five years? This is the, the community house up on Depot Road, Old Depot Road, that has not been taxed in the past. Rick Kovic was here talking about that last week. And they are asking for a tax exempt status, because they use the building for tax exempt purposes. They do occasionally rent it out for a very small fee that really just covers their expenses when they do that. 28 community appropriations, as we talked about. And then, at the bottom of the ballot, under other non-binding business, shall the town locate the new town garage on town-owned property adjacent to the closed landfill on North Road? Again, the select board feels strongly and unanimously that the answer to that question is yes. Either in the site that has been put forward before, down the hill at the back of our property, or should we decide that the, the area made available with the purchase of this second piece of real estate is a better site? We feel that either one of those sites would be suitable place to put the garage, and has the advantage, as Mitch has pointed out, of being industrial zoned land that we already owned. And a big part of why we're doing this, besides the fact that our current garage is antiquated, is that one of the best things we could do to improve our village center would be to get that highway operation out of there and into an industrial zone. Does anyone else have any comments on the ballot or the town meeting vote? Okay, item 11 is opening of bids for roadside mowing.
Okay, we received two bids for the roadside mowing this year. One from David Halsey from Manchester, who did the mowing last year. Another from Orchid Mowing in Chester.
All right. This bid from David Halsey, who did the workforce last year. Lump sum cost, mow two sweeps, $20,500. Availability, first three weeks of June or September. Estimated job duration, three weeks. He indicates type of, type of equipment, the personnel who would be working, which is Mr. Halsey with 36 years' experience, and also Michael Hamilton with 11 years' experience. He gives a reference of the state of Vermont, District 1. He does roadside mowing for them as well, right? Is that two passes or one pass? Two passes. Here's his letter that says, "We will, if you so choose, mow as last year, one pass early and one pass in fall. Payment for the first pass is 10 to 50, do, when completed in June. Payment for the second pass, another $10,250 when completed in September." Last year, we did two passes on all blacktop in September, and would do the same this year. We also mow back all intersections, inside corners, and over the guardrails. And this is his certificate of insurance. And the second one is from... How do you say that?
I think it's Orchid.
Orchid Mowing, O-R-C-H-I-T-T, mowing, okay. From Chester, Vermont. Notice how they won't allow me sharp implements to do this anymore? This is his cover letter from Bruce Orchid, roadside mowing. An estimate, estimated 70-plus miles of road. At two to three passes, where possible, on all class two roads, and two passes where possible, on all class three roads, plus any necessary over-the-rail mowing, mowing to be completed in June and by the end of September, first part of October. I will provide all signage and enclosed, he says, as proof of insurance, W-9 liability, hold harmless agreement, and non-employee work agreement. And his total is $99.50 for each pass, for a total of $19,900. So a difference of $600 less than David Halsey. Did I say David, yes? He indicates his type of equipment, personnel, it looks like it will be all him. He gives professional references from the town of Middleton, Middletown, Peru, and Mendon, where he's apparently done, done roadside mowing. And he also gives a certificate of insurance, taxpayer, taxpayer ID numbers. And this is a liability, hold harmless agreement, in consideration of the agreement of Town of Shasbury to engage my company and me to perform certain services for the municipality. Orchid mowing, and I agree, and for my selves, ourselves, and our heirs. From, I guess. He's asking us...
No, he holds Town of Shasbury harmless.
Oh, he's agreeing to hold us harmless for personal and property damage. Oh, he's agreeing to hold us harmless for personal and property damage. And a non-employee work agreement. I think this is just indicating he's a sole proprietor. Any comments, thoughts?
Did the first mowing bid include over guardrail mowing?
Yes.
It did.
Yes.
I didn't hear that.
Yes, it did.
Both of them have over the guardrail.
Yes.
But he says three passes, this guy says two or three passes where possible on all Class II roads and two passes where possible on all three.
Can I see his?
Do we want to take time to think about this, or is somebody ready to make a motion?
I'd like to think about it. Read those contracts.
Yeah, I can scan the contracts like I do with most of them.
Yes.
And then we can pick it up. We're gonna have to have a short meeting before, oh no, we can do it after the town meeting, we'll do it the Monday after the town meeting then. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just put all these in the Dropbox, everybody can read them.
Well, we don't, there's no rush about this.
Yeah, there is. They all have to plan.
Oh, okay.
If we do, if they, we don't hire them, they would need to be hired by somebody else. So, we're good, it's not like, you know, but we should.
We need a special meeting to do this?
We could, we could have a special meeting five minutes before town meeting.
Oh, okay.
Which is only, what, two weeks?
Right.
And if you want to read these, then, you know, the, what is this, a $600 difference in, yeah, the month from last year?
Yeah, well, the way I see it, there's a $600 difference, they're essentially the same. And I would, I'll actually make a motion. I would move that we go with Mr. Halsey, who did it for us last year.
And he did a good job.
We got lots of compliments on the roadside mowing all year long about what a good job he did, and the price is essentially the same. I think we would reward good work with asking for more of it.
Yeah, the only difference is he said two or three, so that's not definite.
Not definite. It sounds like if he has time to do a third, we might get a third.
I tend to agree, I mean, we know this.
Can I get a second of my motion before we go any further?
Second.
A second.
Tony, second. Mitch, I'm sorry.
I mean, we do know this individual, he's not the first, I think this is the third year, or if we, he's done it two years in a row.
He was hired, we did it ourselves a couple of years, but he had mowed for the town before. I don't know how many years he's done it.
Yeah, he mows up, he mows up 7A.
Oh, he mows up 7A, he mows up Big Route 7, he does a lot of work for the state.
Yeah, he parked at my property one time, I chatted with him.
But he also mowed for the Town of Shasbury, not just last year, but at some point prior to that.
Prior to that, I thought it was like, I thought it was the last two years we rent, didn't we?
No, just last, last year.
Last year was our first year.
Yeah, a couple of years before that, he had done that too.
I thought our tractor went down the year before. I don't know, I thought it was two years.
He probably parked it when he was doing 7A.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I thought it was two years because I could have sworn that tractor broke like the first thing in the spring and we had, we had budgeted a certain amount and then it, we put it out to bed kind of late, and I think he picked it up.
Well, this is my third summer, and this is only, will only be the second time he's been here.
Okay.
But I know he had been here before.
Yeah, and I thought he had done some extra stuff.
He did do extra stuff.
Yeah, lots of it, yeah.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
He actually came in, sat down with Steve, and they worked out how to do the passes so that would be to everybody's mutual benefit.
It looked great, it really looked very good. Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor of awarding the roadside mowing contract to David Halsey, say aye.
Aye.
That motion is agreed to, 400.
Now, if he had said three instead of two or three, then we...
Okay, item 12, looks like David's gonna give us an update on the Shasbury hollow culvert.
Good. This is very brief, but I was speaking with Mance Engineering, Chris Menessi, he's been dealing with a lot of companies trying to get an idea of how to handle this, and it looks like it will be possible to sleeve the culvert, and it will never actually be closed, the work will just take place underneath. I'm working on, and I was just speaking with him last week to try and expedite the whole plan so I can get it in for a structures grant this year with the state, which are due in April. So, hopefully, we can get the engineering plans, the state funded this part of it, so we can send them the engineering plans, and hopefully, they'll be able to fund the actual work this year. Now, because it's gonna come up, if we can sleeve it, it'll certainly be way less than the half million dollars that was talked about before. So, it's nice progress, we're moving along, and it should be done by funding time, so we can get that in.
Is there any estimate on the cost of it, Dave?
I don't have that yet, no. No, not yet. But it certainly will be not putting in a temporary bridge and everything else.
Well, yeah.
So, a lot cheaper than replacing it, so it looks pretty positive from here. You know, there's still a little more conversation, I believe, has to go on with the state and everything about, you know, the fish.
Right.
But apparently, sleeving does not constitute the, does not trigger the rebuilding that required, the thing that was as wide as a football field and...
No, no, I mean, I've never seen it done, Tim, but it's, I got an idea of kind of what it would be, because they, all they do is they just refit something over the bottom and put it up the sides, and attach it to the bottom very well.
So, that's not, it's not a full sleeve, then?
No, no, no.
Bottom, bottom sleeve.
Okay. Well, the key thing is that we're not having to replace it with something that fits Irene codes, I guess.
Well, I'll wait to see the report when it comes in, because it's gonna have to meet certain standards, and I'm not sure what they all are, which is why we wanted to hire the engineer in the first place, to, we're all talking the same language with each other, and they're moving ahead with this, and we're gonna get a cheaper solution to this than what we're doing.
Yeah, it's at least gonna be something reasonable.
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, yeah, cheap is a relative term, you're right. It'll be reasonable, at least, maybe not cheap.
Yeah. Good.
Great.
All right, and we've got an update on the well at Howard Park that we're trying to drill in order to provide drinking water to little leaguers again.
I could not get this in the Dropbox, one of them only came today. Again, with Mance Engineering Partners, Chris Menessi, we've been working on the well, getting all the state permits and everything. Now, we have estimates, proposals from Frost Wells and Pumps and Parker Water Wells. Gould did not submit any paperwork for this. The cost is estimated for the drilling and all that to come in below $10,000. And I had Chris actually approach the company so that he could explain exactly what the permit says and what the intention is of doing this. So, we have the two estimates in front of you that have come out fairly closely. One has, it's a little bit higher. Parker is like $6 higher a foot for drilling, and Frost is $5 a foot for casing, so there should be less casing involved in it, though. So, Frost comes out at a little better price, and their estimate, they're estimating around $9,200. And the depth of the wells in the area run about 300 feet, and they're projecting 160 feet of steel wall casing, plus the grout. Neither includes the pump, because you don't know what kind of pump you need until you find out where the water is. So, there'll be additional costs over this that we can't determine until, you know, we know where, how deep we are. This also doesn't include hooking it up to the main, because we have to dig whatever that is 50 feet, 100 feet over to where the pipe is now, and cut it in there to get it to the buildings, but that shouldn't be a big...
Yeah, we've got tobacco to do that.
Do the digging, we just need a plumber to hook it up, really.
Right.
That's really it. So, but this is the big part, and this will be the most expensive part. Neither of them estimate it'll be in over $10,000, the engineers don't think it'll be over $10,000, but it's water, so you start drilling and, you know, you find it where you find it.
Right. Now, we don't get a total from the Parker estimate. Have you done the math on this?
No, but it would come up relatively...
This says $5 for grow, this says $5 per foot for grow. That's kind of interesting.
Well, that's what they're being met, just $5 a foot, they...
Yeah, that would have to be for grow.
Okay, that's a grout they put in around the casing, and they fill it right up full.
Well, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it seals, they have cracks in ledge or something, use it to seal the ledge.
Yeah, they have to go into ledge, they have to get into bedrock.
Do we have time to go home and do the math on this, or do we need to decide on this one tonight?
Well, it's about 70, let me see, $74,000 plus the grout, at five times 160 feet, there's 900. 20 times 300, $6,000. I could pull out my little calculator if you want.
Your phone?
Where's my phone?
There's your phone.
Do we need a decision on this tonight?
Not particularly, but we could go with the cheaper one. It was recommended Frost, actually. Well, I tell you what, what's the next thing on the agenda? I could do the math real quick. Oh, I'm the next thing on the agenda. The only other thing left on the agenda is, you know...
Yeah.
People at home can bear with me for a minute.
I apologize to the people at home, it's not very arresting television to watch us all doing calculations.
I get 10.5 for Parker.
And 9,000.
Did you get a number?
10.5.
9,000 for...
That's for the drilling for 300 feet, that's for the casing, 3,600, and $5, $900 for the grow. Summing up with 10.5.
10.5 versus 9.2 for Frost, and you said you had a recommendation on Frost?
Motion to approve Frost as the well driller for the Howard Park, new Howard Park well to include 180 feet of, or 60 feet, oops, it's 160 feet of 19 steel casing.
Can I recommend we don't put the feet in there? Those are estimates based on average wells.
You're actually just bidding on the feet because we...
Okay.
No.
Okay, for the price, for $14 per foot, and the cost of steel well casing at $25 per foot, and grout at $5 per foot to seal the steel casing.
Seconded by Tony. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the Frost bid for the well at Howard Park is accepted, according to the numbers cited.
And the Frost bid also includes the well casing, drive shoe, water tight well cap, Vermont tag, and coronation, which the Parker one does not have.
Okay, very good.
It doesn't include the shoe, though.
Sorry?
It didn't include the shoe.
I thought it said it didn't.
Well, shoe used for sitting, and it didn't. Used for sealing casing and into bedrock and the new well cover. Oh.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, it does include it, but...
I'll do up the words later. The next thing is, we have a request for Spiritus Liquors at, from Aramark at the President's House for faculty reception. I don't exactly remember the story behind this, getting here so late, but something caused it to get here real late. The event is on the 22nd of February, so we just need approval so that they can, the same group, Aramark, can have caterer luncheon or a faculty meeting at the President's House.
I'll make a motion to approve the request by Aramark to have a alcohol at the Bennington College President's House.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The catering request to include alcohol is approved, 400, for Aramark at the President's House.
Judy signs that, right?
Yeah, Judy signs it, yeah. Listers, we see this today, also, certificate of no appeal or suit pending. Every year at this time, the select board signs, the listers have signed here, that no appeal or suit is pending based on the grand list that was filed last year. So, they asked the board to sign also.
All right. For the, for the sake of the minutes, can I have a motion that we sign the certificate of no appeal or suit pending related to the grand list? This is that, we're saying that there are no suits or appeals pending on the grand list.
On the grand list, correct.
Of April 1st, 215.
Okay, and we're, we're taking the lister's word on that? I'm not aware of anything.
I'm not aware of anything either.
Yeah.
I'm BCA, I'm aware of nothing.
This is the April 115 grand list. Motion?
So moved.
By Tony, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The certificate of no appeal or suit pending is agreed to, 400.
I saw that overpayment was refunded in this last warrant.
Yeah, I don't think that would be a suit or appeal pending. I guess it might be an appeal pending. No, that's just...
There was just a few that were missed filed.
Three, right? There were three.
There was no grievance there, yeah.
Overall, we refunded a few people. A lot of it came up from the state, too, just misclassifying someone, and they didn't get the right amount, and a lot of it has to do with veterans, some kind of veteran's exemption or something that some people didn't get, one was assigned to the wrong person because they had the same last name, so that had to be... Things like that. No, it's stolen, okay. So, you did get, I put it in everybody's Dropbox this afternoon, we got the final, final plans on the sidewalk that are in V-Trans now. We sent them up this afternoon for the final review, so we can put it out to bid. They're reviewing the bidding documents that are in everybody's Dropbox. You've gotten the preliminaries of these about a month ago, I think, so just when you get a chance, read through the 168-page document for 300 feet of sidewalk, and see if you can pick out anything that stands out. Looking at the diagram is easy, it highlights all the things that you want to make sure are there. There's also a cost estimate in it, it's coming out to be about $118,664 today, not including KAS charges, so, because of the way we restructured it when we went up to Imperial a few months ago, we'll have a 10% cover for that. So, putting KAS's charges on will just about break even on the sidewalk funds, so we're in pretty good shape for this. But hopefully, V-Trans will turn this around quickly, because they know everybody's anxious to get this moving, and we'll get it out to bid in March, maybe even, well, it has to be approved at the next meeting, but then we'll go out to bid, and actually, you can't really, it has to go out exactly as it is. So, we'll get someone to bid on it, and hopefully, we can get it built, because it's not a big project for contractors, not a big project, so hopefully, we'll just find somebody who can understand what you did in between those bigger projects.
They put an estimate at a link, time link on that?
It's probably... It's probably buried in one of the 168 pages. I haven't gotten to that part yet.
Oh, I'm sure.
I charge you with finding that.
Okay.
It's quite a lengthy document and then there's the estimates and then there's the 10 pages of diagrams and, you know, most of the document is disclosure things for, you know, Davis Bacon and everything else that they have to comply with, because it's all federal money going through the state.
It is Davis Bacon, would you?
Yeah, I believe it is. There's a whole section in it on Davis Bacon, so you have to go look in there.
Yeah.
You know, I'll let the bidders read the fine details.
But that varies, that varies with trade, by trade.
Yeah, yeah. But it's all, it's all, a lot of fine detail in this, but the companies that are going to bid on this are well used to it.
It could be up to $35 now on heavy equipment operators.
You know, you could unretire and come out here. Yeah, I don't know. I have no idea what the going wage rate is in Vermont.
It changes every year. But you're not going to have a contract and miss it.
No, you don't. So, that's on, that's on the website, I mean, on the drop box, if you want to look at that. We still are looking at options for coal haul here. I did come across in the old black box that was over there, construction plans from Keefen Westner from 1996. Plans that were never done. Now, this part up here has been changed since then, so we can't use them, but it has an interesting twist on it for the office downstairs. Chris Williams and I went through the building again and we may have some ADA issues we need to address. We did find a tin stamping to fix the ceiling, so we're going to see where we can go with the money. The original plan might not go. We might just change the lights, improve the number of fans up here, put up divider walls instead of ceilings, but we're tossing around a lot of different ideas as it is. Trying to keep the cost as low as possible, but restoring this to some, you know, so it'll look nicer and function better. Functionality being the main driver of this is the functionality.
So, which stamp did you find, the edges or the main?
Everything.
Oh, both sides?
Oh, my, they're unbelievable. The catalogs are huge.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I never knew there was this much tin stamping going on in the world.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's, you can't find, the ceiling one, I think we're still having a little trouble finding, like, for that row that goes across the other, it doesn't match anything. Chris hadn't found something to actually fit in there yet, but it's things close enough. And this, for the, up there where it's all falling apart, there's a lot of things that are very close to that that you could get in. It might not be exact. I mean, custom would be ridiculously expensive, but...
It's got a Roman O.G.
So, why are we leaning away from the drop ceiling now?
Expense. Every time we look at one thing, it gets more expensive. So, when I came across the construction plans from '96 that originally had split the office downstairs by just changing the doorway and everything, I thought that was very interesting, the drawback. If you remember, one of the first things that brought up was dividing that office, but the door, I didn't think the door could be moved, but this was an approved plan that did move the door. And then, as Chris and I were looking into it, we might have to move those walls back a little bit anyway for ADA requirements. So, none of them are load-bearing walls, so we are looking into our things with that. We might have to put some railings out, too. So, we're working. So, it's in motion. Chris is doing a great job with getting a lot of information and it's good to bounce these things off, like, we've had the fire marshals here and everybody checking everything to make sure we're heading in the right direction. The ceilings and the offices, everything would be up, would be nice up here, but the expense is beginning to get quite high, you know, unfortunately. Because what we're looking at is, well, we're looking at as minimum as I can possibly do. You know, maybe 20,000, because we still have to paint the exterior of this. There's still a lot of structural things that need to be addressed. And frankly, the contractors who were doing the work downstairs were kind of amazed at the windows downstairs and wondering why they weren't all replaced. I don't know how historic those windows are. These are a whole different story up here. And these desperately need to be painted and grouted and that's a, you know, look at these windows. That's a big expense doing that. So, we're just trying to get the biggest bang for the buck and make the building as functional, as cheaply as we can. So, we might have to alter the plans as we go along. We're kind of doing it on the fly, but everything in the end will be ADA and everything else compliant, which is where we want to be.
Well, I would just remind everybody that the ceiling was a big part of the functionality that we need in all the offices to provide private offices. We have, we have no place in this building for anybody to have a private conversation and there are a number of places where the listers, the treasurer, the town administrator all interact with the public in ways that should be, should be private and we just don't have any way to do that now.
Yeah.
Dividers aren't going to offer that.
No.
The sound will go right over the top of them.
The only benefit was of coming up with that plan from years back is we could divide the treasurer's office and mine into two decent office space sizes and both have doors and a work area for people who come in to see the treasurer. It's kind of an interesting plan. It changes a few things at a relatively low cost. And there would be complete walls, real walls, between us so that each of us could have conversations. Because I agree, one of the problems now is there's issues where people come in to talk to me that they should deal with. People should be able to come in and talk to the treasurer and not have me sitting there listening to the hall. Other than each of us getting up and leaving all the time. I mean, I have meetings in the parking lot with people, so it's, but it's not the best way to go about things.
Right.
And up here, the reason I started backing off this when we started doing numbers is up here, everyone's part-time. So, it can be scheduled so that these people are relatively alone. And then, I started thinking about the, the energy factor. If, like, I had an office up here or something, then we're running the heat on both levels when it's really not necessary. And the same with air conditioning and air conditioning, whatever, up here, if we, these two fans are really, you could have, like, three fans on either side, change these lights and... We're in the creative stage of trying to make the building work as efficiently for as little money as possible. And even, you know, painting, which is, this room is in Desperito, and fixing some of these architectural features at a relatively low cost could put a whole new face in here. I would say very preliminary with this stuff.
Would, would there be an option for putting a ceiling over part of it?
It would be, uh...
And the reason I say that is maybe the, maybe the meeting room could, could have an acoustic ceiling, which would improve the acoustics for meetings and also would provide a place where people could go to be private during the day if we're not able to afford having each office be private.
So, we can look into it. Obviously, the, that's driving everything is cost, so, you know, we'll see, we'll see what we come up with in the final round. So, just an update.
Okay. Well, our thanks to Chris and Rick Kobic.
And Kobic, too, yes.
Anybody else on that committee?
Nope, just those two.
Sounds like they're doing a lot of good work for us to...
They are. Chris is...
Help us with a problem we've been struggling with for a couple of years.
Yeah, and we're moving along on the timeline because there's money in the budget this year to start the work. I hope to complete the work, so it's just time to do it. Sometimes you just have to decide to get it done.
Right.
And this room will look a million times better with a coat of paint, you know.
Don't forget my curtains.
And your curtains, yes.
Is that boxed in over there for the vent or something?
Yes. When they put the bathroom in, they, the vent goes up there and that's boxed in and
Okay.
and needs to be painted, the ends of these, and, you know, you can just go around the room. It's a project, you know, no doubt about it. That's the big issue. It'd be nice to even work on the floors up here before they deteriorate anymore. I mean, they have, I doubt these have been done in quite some time. Yeah, you got to make, it's maintenance. Now, it seems like a lot of money, but it's, it's maintenance and you have to get on a maintenance schedule, especially if you're building this old.
It's just certain boards, it's going to cost you more money.
Yeah, you know, that's why I want to start painting the exterior on a rotate around the building, because you can't afford to do it all at once and that's bad planning. Rotate around, keep moving around the building.
One side, one side of you?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's a reasonable expense. One year is like 70,000 to paint this place and that's too much. And meanwhile, keeping a reserve for the eventual roof repair, whatever else needs to be repaired at some point.
Right.
I mean, structurally, the building's not going anywhere.
Do they, yeah, they say they validate the steeples now.
Not that anyone's pointed out.
Yeah, I mean, that was done a few, that was done like in 19...
Yeah, I think Keefen Westner looked at that when they were here in 2009, I think. And I don't think there was any mention of anything wrong with the steeple. It was painted, I think, in 2010. So, my biggest concern now, because we fixed the roof last year, we fixed the awning or whatever you want to call that thing, outside roof and it's really the window painted, because if you get up close and start looking at the windows, some are in pretty rough shape. And the more time it goes by, you know, the more expensive it's going to be. And these windows by their nature, I would charge a lot for painting them. I shouldn't say that, but this is a lot of work. This is a lot of work.
There's a lot of, what do you call it, minions, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, and there's a lot of them on each single window.
Moleons.
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 Moleons. And they have to be, minions are the other guys, the little guys. That's what we need, minions.
We need minions to paint.
Minions to paint.
All right. But that'll be it, that'll be it for tonight for me.
All right. Any other business?
No.
Action items. Abby, did I say I was going to do anything tonight?
Oh, get ready for town meeting.
Yeah. That doesn't have to be on the list.
No.
No.
Okay.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Mitch?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.